After six P M on December eleventh, two thousand and twenty four, we're at the Tamworth Townhouse at twenty seven Cleveland Hill Road in Tamworth for a public hearing on Granite Shore Power's application for renewal of its state permit to operate for the White Lake Station Electric Generating Power Station in Tamworth. My name is Michael Fitzgerald. I am the Assistant Director of the Air Division at D E S, and I have been appointed by Craig Wright, Director of the Air Resources Division, as the hearing officer for tonight's hearing. We also have several members of our staff here with us tonight. We have Ash Bustan, a state permit engineer who will be giving the presentation, Meg King, our operating permits engineer, and Todd Moore is the air permits program manager for D E S. We also have some other staff with Cat is in the back here available to assist with questions and helping to run the hearing, so. Welcome to one end. So this hearing will be conducted in accordance with the New Hampshire Code of Administrative Rules, E N V dash A two hundred and E N V dash C two hundred. As required by these rules, the proceedings of this hearing are being recorded, and all who speak will be required to state their, for the record, their name, town, and the name of the party they represent, if any, at this hearing. This hearing is being recorded and will be posted on our website in H D E S. The purpose of the hearing is to provide information on the draft state permit to operate and to receive public comments. Notice of this hearing was published on November seventh, two thousand and twenty four in both the New Hampshire Union Leader and the Conway Daily Sun. The notice indicated that N H D E S would accept comments on the draft permit until Thursday, December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty four. The process for this hearing will be as follows. First, Ash will provide a brief presentation on the draft permit. Once she is finished, we'll see if anyone has clarifying questions on the permit. We'll then open the public testimony portion of the hearing. We'll request that any interested persons in attendance to provide oral testimony. Each person will have a five-minute opportunity to speak. After five minutes, we'll give you a friendly reminder. Questions will be addressed by N H D E S to the extent possible during the hearing. However, the purpose of this hearing is to solicit and receive comments from you. So N H D E S will address comments in our final decision if we don't address them directly tonight, and that final decision will be posted on our website. Once everyone who cares to testify has done so, I'll then close the public hearing. If there are any questions about how we're going to proceed, Meg can briefly go over that, over how to do so, otherwise we'll proceed with Ash's presentation. So does anyone have any questions? Thank you. Thanks. I've been crystal clear apparently. So. Let's see. So we'll begin now with the presentation by Ash Bustan.
Good evening. My name is Ash Bustan. I'm a permit engineer with the Air Resources Division of the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, and I will be giving a presentation on the draft state permit to operate renewal for Granite Shore Power's White Lake Slation facility. In this presentation, I will cover a brief overview of the operations at the facility, the facility's history, the renewal process for state permits to operate, the regulatory and emissions evaluation for the renewal. I'll outline some of the requirements in the state permit to operate and conclusions and next steps. White Lake Station is owned and operated by G S P White Lake L L C, which is a subsidiary of Granite Shore Power L L C. The facility operates an electric generating power station at two eighty nine Maple Road in Tamworth. The permitted emission unit is a Pratt and Whitney aircraft gas turbine, which operates as a load shaving unit, which is a type of power generation system used to help manage electricity demand on the grid. During times of high demand, load shaving units can quickly generate additional power to meet the increased need, which helps prevent strain on the grid that can cause power interruptions and blackouts. The power output of the combustion turbine is around twenty point four megawatts on average, but this can vary seasonally by up to five megawatts due to seasonal changes in the intake air temperature, and the unit burns kerosene as fuel. An emergency generator, which is below the permitting threshold, is also on site. White Lake Station was originally owned by the Public Service Company of New Hampshire, or P S N H, and the combustion turbine was installed at the facility in nineteen sixty eight. D E S was notified of the transfer of ownership of White Lake Station and other electric generating power stations around the state from P S N H to Granite Shore Power in two thousand and eighteen, and the current permit, which is state permit to operate, S P dash two sixteen, was transferred. This type of facility gets inspected by D E S every five years. No deficiencies were identified during the last compliance inspection, which took place in two thousand and twenty two, or the last one that was in two thousand and sixteen.
Can everyone hear Ash?
State permits to operate are issued for a period of five years, and the applicant must apply for a renewal at least ninety days before the permit expires. Granite Shore Power submitted a renewal application for White Lake Station's air permit on September first, two thousand and twenty three, which was at least ninety days before the expiration of the permit on November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty three. Therefore, White Lake Station is covered under the application shield requirements of E N V A six oh eight point one two, which means that the facility can continue to operate the combustion turbine under the conditions of the previously issued permit. Operations at White Lake Station are unchanged, and no modifications were requested with the formal renewal. For the process of renewing a state permit to operate, we perform a technical and engineering review, which includes evaluating air emissions and determining the applicability of state and federal air regulations, and we prepare draft permit. We published a notice in the Conway Daily Sun and the Union Leader on August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty four to inform the public of the draft permit, and the permit and supporting documents were made available on our only database, One Stop, and the public comment period was open for thirty days. We received the public hearing request on September twelfth, and we are holding the public hearing tonight. Air emissions for the combustion turbine were evaluated for the permanent renewal. Permanent nitrogen oxides or NOx emissions calculations for the turbine were updated based on the most recent NOx stack test, which was conducted in two thousand and twenty, and I will explain stack testing in greater detail on the next slide. Although permanent NOx emissions are limited to less than fifty tons per year, actual NOx emissions are substantially lower. For example, in two thousand and twenty three, NOx emissions equated to three point three tons per year, as shown in the example calculation on this slide. The potential to emit for other regulated pollutants such as particulate matter, sulfur dioxide, carbon monoxide, and volatile organic compounds, or VOCs, which are calculated using A P forty two emission factors, which are standardized device-specific values, which are published by E P A, and emissions were consistent with past engineering evaluations. Annual emissions for all regulated pollutants are consistently well below the maximum permitted emissions, as shown in the table on this slide. NOx stack testing must be conducted every five years, or the facility must use a NOx emission default value when calculating emissions, which is one point two pounds per million B T U to show compliance with E N V A thirty two hundred, the NOx Budget Trading Program. The most recent stack test was conducted on March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty. E P A methods three A, seven E, and ten were used for emissions testing, and the results were based on the averages of three thirty-minute runs while the combustion turbine operated at baseload or ninety percent of its maximum rated capacity. E P A method nine was used to observe visible emissions or opacity over a span of two hours, and White Lake Station derived an emission factor of zero point eight zero eight pounds per million B T U of NOx from the stack testing. And the table on this slide presents NOx stack testing results for the past five tests. D E S conducts a regulatory review of state and federal air rules for each permit renewal. We identify newly applicable regulations and verify whether any rules were updated and trigger any changes to permit conditions. No regulatory updates were identified for this permitting action. There were minor administrative updates to the permit, including adding a condition that the facility may be required to conduct stack testing upon the request of D E S and adding a record-keeping requirement that the facility must maintain a twelve-month running total of kerosene burned in the combustion turbine. Next, I'll cover some of the requirements in the state permit to operate. White Lake Station is a synthetic minor source of NOx. This means that facility-wide allowable emissions of NOx are limited to below the major source threshold of one hundred tons per year, so they are not required to obtain a Title Five operating permit. And the permit limit is established as less than fifty tons per year to allow the facility to opt out of the NOx act rule or reasonably available control technology. And they are a true minor source of all other regulated pollutants. The permit includes a fuel usage limitation of nine hundred eight thousand two hundred seventy gallons of kerosene in any consecutive twelve-month period to ensure that they meet the emission limit for NOx. And the sulfur content of the kerosene is restricted to less than zero point zero four percent by weight. The combustion turbine must also meet a visible emission limit that restricts opacity to forty percent or less for any continuous six-minute period and a particulate matter emission limit of zero point three four pounds per billion B T U or less. Both of these limitations are applicable to all fuel burning devices that were installed prior to nineteen seventy. White Lake Station is subject to E N V A thirty two hundred, the NOx Budget Trading Program, because all electric generating facilities with a rated output of fifteen megawatts or more are subject to the program. The purpose of this rule is to reduce NOx emissions in the region during the ozone season, which is from May first to September thirtieth, to meet the National Ambient Air Quality Standards for Ozone. Under the NOx Budget Trading Program, facilities subject to the rule are allocated a certain number of NOx budget allowances. Each allowance permits the emission of a certain amount of NOx, and facilities can buy, sell, and trade these allowances with one another. They can also save unused allowances for future ozone seasons. And these are referred to as control periods, and at the end of each control period, they must ensure that they have enough allowances to cover their actual emissions or will face penalties if their emissions exceed their allowances. The NOx Allowance Tracking System, or N A T S, is a database maintained by D E S to track how many allowances are held and used by each participating facility. The authorized account representative, or A A R, or the alternate A A R, submits all transactions and reports to the N A T S. Gas or oil-fired combustion units may qualify as low-mass emissions, or L M E units, or NOx, if they emit less than fifty tons per year during the ozone season. Since the turbine has an emission limit of less than fifty tons per year, it does qualify as an L M E unit, and they have specific testing and reporting requirements, which I'll cover on the next slides. Moving on to monitoring and testing requirements, White Lake Station must test each kerosene delivery or maintain fuel delivery tickets to ensure that it meets the sulfur content limit. And since the combustion turbine is an L M E unit, the facility must determine a fuel and unit-specific emission factor every five years. Instead of using a continuous emissions monitoring system, the facility can use L M E-accepted monitoring methodology by calculating NOx emissions based on an emission factor derived either from stack testing or a default NOx emission rate. If changes in the fuel or the facility operations increase NOx emissions, then this rate needs to be recalculated. G S P uses a site-specific NOx emission factor that's obtained through stack testing, and there are standardized E P A stack testing methods that are used to determine those emissions. The facility will submit a pre-test protocol to D E S before the stack test, and D E S attends the stack test as an observer and reviews and approves the report, which is submitted by the facility at least within sixty days of the stack test. White Lake Station performed stack testing in two thousand and twenty, and the next test is due in two thousand and twenty five if they continue to use a site-specific NOx emission factor. For record-keeping requirements, White Lake Station must keep track of how much kerosene is used in the turbine along with documentation that the fuel meets the sulfur content limit. Records, including a twelve-month running total of NOx, must be maintained, and additional requirements are triggered if actual NOx emissions exceed ten tons per year. This includes maintaining monthly records for NOx and the typical operating schedule of the turbine. And since the facility is a NOx budget source, these records must be maintained for five years. Facilities must also keep records of and report any excess emissions that result in a deviation from the limits established by the permit. Annual emission reports are due on April fifteenth, and if NOx emissions exceed ten tons per year, then additional NOx records must be submitted with this report, and annual emission fees are due the following month on May fifteenth. NOx budget sources have an additional compliance certification report that must be submitted by November thirtieth, and they also need to submit quarterly NOx reports during the ozone season. For the next steps, D E S will review all comments received during the public comment period and all testimony received during this hearing. We have extended the public comment period for one week following this hearing, which will close on December nineteenth. We will make a decision to issue or deny the permit within thirty working days. The applicant or the public may appeal the director's final decision to the New Hampshire Air Resources Council within thirty working days after issuance of the decision.
Thank you very much, Ash. Very thorough. I assume everyone got all of that. We'll be handing out a quiz before you leave, so. So with that, as I mentioned, we will conduct this hearing in two portions. One is the presentation, and if you have questions clarifying what was presented, this is not the time to make public comment or provide your comments, but if you have questions on something that you heard and you'd like to have that clarified, we'll do that now, and then, as I mentioned, we'll move into the public comment period, and we have several people who have expressed a desire to comment. If you have not done so yet, if you want to comment, please see Cat in the back and fill out one of these green cards, and we'll allow commenters, again, about five minutes each. We try not to cut people off, but we like you to limit the testimony. So at this point, do we have any questions on Ash's? Yes, sir.
Yeah, my name is Sandy. I have a background question. It's plant. Not sure if this is something you can answer, but I am curious whether the location of the plant is critical to the service it provides. So if this plant were not here and you had twenty megawatts of additional capacity at a large plant in the southern part of the state or something like that, would that be would that be sufficient to allow this plant to be retired? Or is it actually important to have the power source located here and some green traffic considerations? If you don't know the answer, it's not.
As I said, our group does not know the answer to that.
I will point out that there are staff here from G S P. You might be able to turn to later and address that question, but. Yes, sir.
Your presentation.
State your name.
Richard Gasset, here on West Side Court.
Thank you.
In your presentation, you indicated the emission factors were used for stationary gas turbine. I assume gas means natural gas. This is powered by kerosene, so are the emission factors the same? I would assume they were.
The emission factors are for, they do apply to kerosene, so it applies to a gas turbine. So these devices, some of them do run on gas, but you're right that there are differences in the emissions, and we do account for that for A P forty two emission factors.
I guess the other question I have about the mission controls, it was built in nineteen sixty eight. Are the emission controls circa nineteen sixty eight, or have they been improved over time?
By emission controls, you mean pollution control equipment or something of that nature?
Yes.
So there is no pollution control equipment installed at White Lake Station. This is mainly due to them being underneath the NOx act threshold. So the pollutant of concern at White Lake Station is nitrogen, like NOx pollution. So since their emissions are limited to below fifty tons per they do not have pollution control equipment.
So even if this were built today, it wouldn't need current emission controls because it's small?
So there are new source performance standards for newer devices. I don't know off the top of my head that threshold for that, but you are correct that there are new source performance standards that this facility is not subject to. And I don't know if anybody else wants to use.
I think in general, that question, if something were to be built today, it would go through a permitting exercise, and what we do is sift through all the regulations and figure out, you know, what is it, what is it using for fuel, when will, you know, dates of installation, and that will determine what applies. So it's kind of a, seems like a simple hypothetical question, but it's actually not. It would very likely be different. But in this exercise, what we've done is gone through and made sure that the regulations that do apply to this nineteen sixty eight vintage unit are accurately reflected here.
And the fact that the prior permit expired doesn't bring it up to current standards? It's shielded, is the word that was used.
So the facility did submit their application on time, so application shield applies for the previous permit. So that permit was issued back in two thousand and seventeen, but it is relatively the same as the renewal. There aren't many changes that were made during the renewal process. It's mainly administrative changes that were made, but they are subject still to those same requirements.
I guess my last question would be, how often does it operate? Does it operate every year for a few days or several weeks? Or how much use are we talking?
So in two thousand and twenty two, it was a little over a hundred hours in the year, and it was, I believe, forty one hours in two thousand and twenty three. So it is intermittent use that could be spread throughout the year. I know that in two thousand and twenty two, the majority of the operations occurred between, I think it was December and February. It was about seventy-five percent of the operating time occurred then. So it does intermittently come on. We don't have exact data as far as how many times it has turned on and off, but we do have just those general operating hours.
I just want to add a little note on the application shields and this, like, these permits come up for renewal every five years, and that's to force the owner and us to go back and look at the facility and make sure that if regulations have changed, we update the permit. You know, I think, you know, Ash tightened up some of the permit conditions, so it's not like every five years, people's permits disappear and they have to reapply. It's just a forced check, and the system is purposely set up such that they're required to apply to us, but if they follow those procedures, their permit remains in effect until we finish this update review. And actually, if they're going to operate, they are required to continue operating under that permit.
Thank you.
Yes.
You mentioned that they have an emergency.
Could you state your name, please?
Yeah, so the emergency generator, it is below the permitting threshold, but it is just an oil-fired emergency generator, yes.
Yes, sir.
Sheldon Perry, and I'm with the planning board. I know saying that your presentation is really mainly concerned about air pollution.
That's correct.
However, as a planning board member who has recently adopted a groundwater protections ordinance, which kicks in for businesses using fifty-five gallons of regulated substances or more requiring a conditional use permit. You wouldn't need to do that because you're insisting business, but if I'm not mistaken, you're at the intersection of Nathan Road and Turkey Street, that near there, correct?
It's the, you know, we're in a documentary address.
Well, anyway, that's an area where the the A P A P F R exists. And my question is, are, does this facility currently meeting all the state and requirements, federal requirements, as it pertains to businesses over in A P F R? Meaning, are they in current, you know, there's been no violations as such, and that they are currently meeting best management requirements? And is it for such a disservice?
I think, actually, I can take that. You are correct that this was very focused on air, because that is the only thing that we are looking at here, our air pollution control requirements. We're actually in the Air Division of Department of Environmental Services. In other divisions, there are probably above-ground storage tanks. I presume there are tanks here that hold the kerosene, and they may be subject to some other state requirements relative to that, but that's not something that's contemplated or regulated through this process.
So if you want to provide us with your contact information, we can certainly put you in touch with the appropriate staff as relative to the groundwater protection issues that you want to know about.
Follow-up, if you're doing one public hearing for air pollution, would there be one for the potential of drinking water?
That would depend on the specific rules and state statutes that apply to that situation, which we're not familiar with, but if, you know, if they were going to require a permit, and there may or may not be a permit hearing depending on the requirements of the rules, the type of facility, et cetera. But again, I can put you in touch with staff at D E S who can provide you with all the information you need on that. Yes, yeah, be happy to. See me after the hearing.
Okay.
Yeah. Does anyone else have questions? Yes, state your name, please. Yes.
Intermittent like this, when you look at the annual emissions, but most of the power has been generated in like a month, two months, so then it's a much higher concentration, so the effects on the local neighbors especially would be a lot higher than, so how do you? I know this is a different kind of a situation, so how do you address that?
No, but like, the impacts, you know, Ash said, most of the operation last year was in December and January as opposed to the year. It's really sifting through all those regulations and which ones apply. In this case, the ones that apply, for example, is they elected to keep their emissions under fifty tons per year in any twelve-month period. I don't think the permit contains, you know, short-term emission limitations. The, I mean, we have an idea of what the short-term emissions would be, because we know, you know, the emission factor is what comes out, but that's not there's nothing specific in the permit as far as a short-term emission limitation. And that probably doesn't fully answer your question. There. If this were a new facility, what we're talking about, like, you'd be starting, like, there were probably evaluations done at some point if they triggered certain things for short-term emissions, but it's just, there's nothing in the permit for an hourly or a daily emission limit. It can keep it under fifty tons a year, and that could be all in one month, or it could be, you know, the same for every month.
Yes.
NOx emissions limit of ten. So the ten tons per year, that is just a reporting requirement. So if they reach a threshold of annual emissions of ten tons per year, then there are specific record-keeping and reporting requirements that are triggered. However, that is a ton per year, not a ton per month limitation, and their emissions are usually in the bottom. emissions are usually in the ballpark of like two or three tons per year and only already.
No other questions? Okay, so at this point, we'll begin the uh public comment period. And uh I will call on you. I'd ask you to uh stand and uh uh please make sure that you uh we have a microphone here that's recording for the whole room. So please uh speak uh uh loudly enough to be picked up by the microphone if you can be uh be clear and uh state your uh uh state your name and your um uh address and your affiliation, if any, if you're representing an organization of any type uh or business, uh uh would appreciate that. So uh with that, I will call on Gabrielle. Oh, wait, no, that's the last. Number one, I'm sorry. Um, Mr. Perry.
Well, thank you. I thought I wasn't.
Okay, well, you you had questions and and they were, you know, they were relevant to the question period. So so I didn't do that. So, all right, thank you. Uh, next is Richard in uh Dussault is oh, oh, Dussault, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Radio Road, Tamworth, Slidmore. Um, I guess you know, like additional comment or question I would have is in any case, a fuel usage limitation of kerosene is over nine hundred thousand gallons. So they're limited to that or that's what they tend to use per year?
So the limitation is just to make sure that they are under that NOX threshold of fifty tons per year. So they typically use much less kerosene than that. I think last the twenty twenty three, I think it was sixty one thousand. So it's it's much lower.
Do you have any sense of how many deliveries is sixty one thousand? Or they I know they used to have tanks with some pipes, but do they they must have large storage tanks on site? I'm curious about the number of times there's um fuelers being delivered because that's when spills tend to happen is when deliveries.
I do not have that information. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next I'll call on Rebecca Bolio. Again, if you'll state your name and your affiliation.
To first thank the Department of Environmental Services for coming out tonight. I think transparency with public when it comes to en- environmentally harmful infrastructure is really important. Um, so thank you. Uh, White Lake Station was built in nineteen sixty eight and we are sixty years later. Since then, uh, we've had the Clean Air Act uh to protect public health and regulate emissions of us first air pollutions. We also now know the impact that fossil fuels is having are are having on the global scale. Uh, and the negative health impacts associated with facilities like this. The World Health Organization estimates that four point two million deaths globally are linked to ambient air pollution mainly from heart disease, stroke, lung cancer, and acute respiratory infections. Uh, White Lake Station burns kerosene and according to the U S Energy Information Administration, jet fuel specifically. Uh, fuel produces particulate matter, CO two and NOx emissions, uh as you've mentioned. Jet fuel exposure can be toxic. Uh, and while there are numerous studies of the impact of burning kerosene on community health, we don't have data specific to Tamworth because we haven't been subject to such a study. Uh, and this facility is small. Uh, while Barramack Station coal plant was outfitted a few years ago with pollution controls and smokestack to reduce certain air pollutants, uh, I'm concerned that White Lake Station has no pollution controls. The emissions are technically within the legal limits because uh it isn't as big as its counterparts in the state. My main concern uh is is in that with this air permit uh that we do not know the direct impact uh of the community around the plant. We theoretically know that uh if you were to breathe in air uh near White Lake Station for prolonged periods of time, it would not be good for our health. I grew up playing soccer right across from a coal plant that is now shut down. Uh, but I developed asthma as a student after breathing that air in my whole life. Uh, the air permit for White Lake Station said the plant operated for a hundred and sixteen point four hours in twenty twenty two, uh, which was about one thousand seven hundred point one megawatt hours. Uh, and in those operating hours, it would be beneficial to know how many different days the plant was operating. Uh, when kerosene powered facilities turn on, of course, they emit more pollutants in the warm up process. This facility i- is also in proximity to residential neighborhood. Even though it's not a giant coal plant, every time it turns on, it impacts the people nearby. How can members of the public who live nearby be notified when the plant is coming online? In case they want to stay inside to avoid breathing more polluted air? Uh, what other measures can we take to protect our local air quality? Money from all of our electric bills goes back into this system that pays for the station to stay online. Uh, and thus transparency at every step is important. The amount of money spent keeping this little used facility online could easily be replaced with battery storage or solar, uh especially now when there are tax breaks. Money from the Inflation Reduction Act and other federal resources to trans to transition something like this facility to clean energy. Uh, I know that part is beyond DES's responsibility in reviewing the air permit. Um, but I believe it is an important consideration to name during this process. As I know, DES is also working on a comprehensive climate action plan and and another department that they received a grant for. Granite Shore Power is already promoting their cleanest B plans for their two almost retired coal plants. Uh, and I think the a project at White Lake Station would be much smaller and simpler. There are opportunities uh starting here for better collaboration between communities, power plants, and environmental advocates. And it is important for us to move together uh forward together for the sake of our health and this earth that we rely on. Thank you for your time.
I'll ask. Uh, if you wouldn't mind, we'd appreciate a a copy. Looks like you're if you're ready to give it to us. That's it. It really helps us if you cover a lot of grounds and make sure we get it correct. Thanks.
Hey. Next is so it's like Laura Colton.
Um, thanks Laura Colton. Um, call me now because that was excellent. Thank you. It brought up a lot of points that I was concerned about. I wanted to thank you guys for coming here. Uh, mostly from a health perspective, I am a registered nurse and I know the effects we all here know the effects of pollution on people's overall health. Um, my main concern with this one, in addition, well, I guess, is the age of it. And that why can something that is this old when we know there are so much uh better pollution controls, whether it's better scrubbers or whatever, why can something uh that was built in nineteen sixty eight continue to exist, especially given that it had changed hands? We know we owe it to our neighbors, I would say, uh, better air quality. So that's my main concern from an air quality perspective. I also have water concerns too on storage and something that's intermittently used like this. I think we could come up with better alternatives. And I don't think you need to comment on those, but I suppose just blank, blankly stamping it through without looking at some alternatives to bring it up to where we are at least today, if not um into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Next, uh, we have Kit Morgan.
Again, for being here, I'm Kit Morgan, I live in Tamworth. And uh, couple of points. I think again, that's right, it can be helped to know uh how many days it's turned on because that is what they said. Time when instead warming up is probably when it's uppolluting the most. And if it if it runs for short times for several days, uh, what would be the impact in the neighborhood? Is there could there be any testing uh policies in the in the vicinity, not just on site? Um, the other graphic is a learning uh one to ask was, um, I understand that DES is working on a climate action plan for their interests. And obviously, this is pretty important of project. And uh, how how does your vision in specific permit consideration like this coordinate with what's being developed and in climate action, the field is or is there enough information available yet to know if this is consistent with the climate action plan or current climate related policy?
Okay. So the climate action plan, uh, the intersection with our work is me. Uh, I'm in charge of the climate action plan as well as uh uh the uh permitting staff uh here at DES and uh uh I'd be happy offline to talk with talk with you a little bit more about the climate plan process. Uh, we just did, we just did this kickoff today. But just very quickly, the climate planning process is being done in response to a three million dollar grant that we received from the federal EPA uh last year. Uh, and that uh climate planning uh grant required us to produce uh a uh what's called a comprehensive climate action plan. Um, and the work that we're doing under that also qualified the state of New Hampshire to apply for four over four point six billion dollars in federal funding um uh that was awarded nationally. Uh, we did receive uh one four hundred and fifty million dollar grant uh jointly for several New England states for uh individuals and residences to uh uh put heat pump technology into their homes. Um, so uh again, I don't want to derail this hearing, but just very quickly that that the climate action plan certainly uh will will look at all the sources in the state that are are emitting. Um, and uh we we inventory those and all that will be accounted for in the climate action plan. So uh then be happy to Mr. Morgan and I worked together in a prior life and so be be happy to uh meet meet with you, talk with you or whatever whatever uh brother later. Okay, um, next. Is it Wor- Wharton Sinclair? Yes, sorry if I butchered that.
I um in uh Road in Sandsham, Hampshire. And uh, I I uh fall falling up with expression, I am concerned about climate change. Uh, and I see the present problems of small plants that rely on fossil fuels as you know, ripe uh direction in terms of reducing our carbon emissions. Um, because I think they are more easily replaced um by uh uh storage technology, for example, and um I um you know, my concern of climate stems from a lot of recent uh well, older and also more recent observations of soaring global temperatures and then also some surface temperatures. I'm sort of really encouraged the state of New Hampshire to be yes specific to uh insert itself starts in terms of helping the companies that operate with now orders to uh move in the right direction on this problem. Um, I uh I you know, I I think one step might be considered would be to work with the power generators in New Hampshire to develop plans and develop, you know, work out the economics of replacing a plant like the White Lake Plant with a small uh power storage facility. Uh, now, you know, I'm not an expert in that myself, but um it seems like a possible solution that would solve all the air emission, uh, why emission problems and also at the same time make progress on the climate issue which you're working on, obviously, with the climate action plan. So uh, thank you for being here and those are my biggest concerns and I think there are opportunities here. And uh my suggestion is full power, full speed, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah. Climate planning work does include um technical a number of technical sessions over the next few months. Uh, and we reach out to the uh to generators, to electric utility uh district distribution companies, et cetera, all types of the bus businesses in New Hampshire to um come in and talk with us about what how what what ways we can uh effectively reduce emissions in the state. So thank you for your comments. Uh, next would be Genevieve Christie. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm Allison. I'm from Waddlelands. Just wanted to say thank you for being here on this icy evening. I really appreciate it.
Just for the record, state your name.
I'm John Goodstate. Yes. I have a couple of concerns. I'll just say one initially is I would want, you know, real clear rationale to come from your department as to why you would approve of a plant such as this that's nearing the end of its functional life when there are probably many other more efficient and less climate impactful alternatives to provide the power. So that's one concern. So this is quite a polluting facility. And even though right now it is meeting well below the emissions thresholds, it is nevertheless emitting. And it is approved for a much greater capacity of operation than it's currently functioning at. But it could be called upon to be used much more at a much higher capacity. And that's a concern. When you say that the emissions are evaluated, tested based on the annual emission, to me, that is quite a concern because it could emit half of its annual limit in a very short period of time. And that could cause great pollution for the immediate neighbors of that facility. And I have something of a lung condition. And I know that being in a highly polluted environment, even for a short period of time, can have great serious and long-term consequences for my health. And so even though we're, as I understand, the testing is, you know, meets all required thresholds, the annual emission limit is not very comforting to me. And another concern of mine is that that there are no, also because of its size, there are no required smokestack of pollution controls for this facility. And I wonder, that's not very comforting to me because even though it's small, it's still polluting. And I would really hope that there would be controls in any facility that you're granting a permit to. And the last concern really is we're ratepayers. And this is a very expensive facility to operate. One of the figures that I heard was that its last annual cost was a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars a year. And that the future cost, maybe not for the next year, but two years down the road, the annual cost would be seven hundred and forty-nine thousand. And those costs are passed on to all the ratepayers here. And even though that's not primary, primarily a DES question, it is, I would think that, you know, it ought to be in one of the things you consider when you're permitting facilities, are they good value people on providing a service to the public, even if they need pollution controls?
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Next, I have Gabrielle Watson.
I think people have covered a lot of the comments that I wanted to make. But my main concern is, given the age of the facility, that it is approaching the end of its useful life. And that as ratepayers, we're paying between a hundred and nineteen and seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year just to keep the thing operating, never mind the compensation for energy it does produce through ISO new England, just to keep it online and available. What is New Hampshire DES doing to encourage and support the owner-operator to encounter alternatives like battery power or like virtual power plants that could trim our peak demand of electricity, which we face in the primarily our colder months? Instead of enabling this old aging facility to continue to loop neighbors in our community? I, along with a number of other people in this room, own an electric car. I would be more than happy to offer ten percent of my car's battery for a virtual power plant and get a little bit of payment for that. Thank you very much. Or go to home batteries. I feel like that is a much more viable way of democratizing our energy production and reducing the harms of concentrated energy pollution in our communities.
Thank you. I do want to state that, again, we're providing this information tonight based on the statutes and rules that guide us and the regulations that authorize the work that we do. A number of the comments that I'm hearing tonight are really comments about the operation of the facility. And that type of information is regulated more by the Department of Energy in the state. And I would certainly recommend that people take a look at contacting them if they have concerns about, you know, the economic issues and operational issues and so on. Our purview is really air pollution. And so. But thank you for the comments and certainly we will carry them back. So next, I have Kendra Ford.
I appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Allow your time to have this process, including people from the community. So I'm Kendra Ford and I do work with three fifteen in New Hampshire. And as someone has already said, a lot of the things that I wanted to say have already been said in some form. That I think the age of the plant is a really important consideration. The plant was put in place both for the Clean Air Act came into being. And so we've learned and made a whole bunch of collective decisions since it was started. And so it seems like it's time for the reality of our regulations to catch up with the operation of this plant. And on your website, you noted, I think in twenty twenty-two, that it was time for the plant to consider an end-of-life plan. And I wonder if there's been follow-up on that comment or observation? And if there hasn't been follow-up, what there could be for that? Because it seems like it's time for that. And many of the other things that I have to say have been said about the fact that just because there's an annual limit doesn't mean that there aren't spikes in emissions that are harmful and that we don't have good track information on. And that we're, as ratepayers, we're paying a lot of money for an old plant to sit out the grid when we could transition. Could use that money to have already transitioned to something that doesn't emit air pollution and also doesn't contribute probably to the house. So thank you for your time and thank you for listening to the people who live next to the plant.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. One second. Cat, do we have any other cards? Are we, that's the end? Does anyone else wish to comment prior to, I will let you speak, but I just want to make sure. Have you filled out a green card? Could you, C. Cat, fill out a green card and take this comment in the meantime? And then I'll call on you. So, yes, go ahead. Let's again state your name.
Genevieve Christie. And I just wanted to add one really, I think, does relate to DES as well. That the substack emissions are only tested once every five years. And for an old plant where there are no pollution controls in this because of its small size, once every five years feels to me like it's putting us all at risk. And so I hope that there might be some sort of regulation or requirement that there be minimum annual emissions checks in the substack.
Thank you. What's that? Thank you very much. Just go ahead and state your name and.
President of Tamworth, just wondered if this plant is approved for another five-year period, is there any likelihood that a plant like this would ever be taken offline based on things like the Climate Action Plan? Would that change a five-year?
The Climate Action Plan is non-binding, non-voluntary. We don't have any authority in the state of New Hampshire. Several states around us have climate laws, goals, and requirements and so on. New Hampshire does not have that. So our climate plan is a non-binding plan. And as such, we wouldn't have any authority to say, okay, shut down this plant or replace it with this or whatever. But I think, you know, the climate plan, and as I say, when we finish the hearing here, we'll talk a little bit more about the climate plan. But the intent of it is to collect information to generate a discussion, allow businesses, impacted people and so on to come together and see if we can come up with something that is, you know, sort of the New Hampshire way that, you know, does not involve top-down mandates. The, we don't have that authority. So we need to figure out what we can do and what we, you know, how we can work together to encourage climate pollution reductions. So.
And barring that, I understand that you just said. It's a voluntary thing. It is a plan. Once it has received a five-year approval, are there any circumstances that the emission would come off of?
Say, good. Talks a little earlier about the five-year renewal cycle. Again, that's a forced trigger for us to go back and look and see, has anything changed relative to regulations? And the way the regulations work, new ones come out and they'll generally define like this new regulation applies to maybe its new facilities. Or some regulations actually apply to existing facilities and may require them to change. And the owner-operator would be required to come up to speed to meet that new regulation or, you know, make a change or shut it down or whatever. So one thing that Ash did during this renewal cycle is to pour through updates to the regulations. We have not identified anything that is new for this facility that would require them to make a change. If that were to happen, a new regulation, maybe something eventually the Climate Action Plan turns into a law, turns into a regulation, that's when it gets all the way down to our grid. When it becomes something that is required, we make sure that we find it and make sure the facility knows about it and it gets in their plan. So it can happen, but whether or not it's going to happen for this facility, I can't predict that.
Thank you for your comments. So I see no other commenters this time. So this concludes the testimony portion of today's hearing. As I mentioned, those that are interested, I'll be happy to talk about the climate plan a little bit more after I close the hearing, if you're interested. But we thank everyone for taking the time to participate. Like to make a couple of notes before we officially close the hearing. As we stated earlier, the deadline for public comments will be four P M. on Thursday, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. So if you think of something between now and next Thursday that you want to communicate to us, you still have the opportunity. Also, just to reiterate on the process, once the public comment period is closed, we have, by statute, thirty days to review all the comments we received and to issue a final decision. All those who provided contact information at today's hearing and those who submitted written comments will be provided with a copy of the final decision via email. It will also be available on our website. So this concludes the comment period in this hearing. And we appreciate you all coming out on a cold wintry night. And I'm going to, you have further questions?
Clearly, how comments should be submitted?
Sure.
And is there a website that you just, or was it in the presentation?
How can they submit comments to us?
So you can send an email to any one of us. I will be, there's a business card right behind you, if that helps.
And for those that attend many other public comments periods for similar state offices, are public comments, can I see someone else's public comment? Would there be a website where those are available for public? Can we submit them to you and no one else gets to see them?
All public comments that we receive, we will address in a findings of fact that will be publicly available on our website. So that will be on one stop, along with the supporting documentation. Thank you so much.
And I think you had asked the specific comments, like our summary and our response, we may, you know, combine some to paraphrase. But the actual comments will be public records. We don't typically post them. But if anyone asks, they can go see them. And actually, the applicant or the owner of the facility has an opportunity to ask for all of them once comment period is closed. And then they have an opportunity to also submit their response if they want to. So yes, they are a public record, but we don't typically post them easily. Yeah.
So with that, I'll close the hearing and appreciate everyone's time and attention. We thank you.